... Do you define the United States of America? And if you're the Republic, who understands one nation, another God, and your crystal with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you for this evening gathered together. Ask for your travel mercies for all of our people. Thank you for all of our employees that have come this evening and those that are home with their family. How could you give them special rest tonight and strength for tomorrow? In your name we pray.
President.
Yeah.
President.
Here. Henry Van Der Mee.
Here.
For the Treasury, Darcy Van Der Mee. City Attorney Julie is to be in the building many seconds. And also here. Okay. First on the agenda. Utility service connection fourteen eleven.
So what is up with consideration today from board of directors? Is the reestablishment of water at the... The reason why this is being brought up at this point to make it clear, the current owner has not paid the outstanding bill yet. There is a proposed purchase agreement that has been provided to us. We have looked at it. Within the purchase agreement itself, we've been able to get language in there that says out of the closing, everything's going to be cut off. That is better than what we could have ever hoped to kind of get out of this. We were able to get that in, but what is imperative in that is that the proposed buyer needs to do their due diligence on the park itself. They cannot do that due diligence if the water turned off. They need to check to see whether leaks are there, wanting to come in and get all of those repaired and get them taken care of. So is it an absolute guarantee that the bills are going to be paid? No, it is not. But this is as close as we're going to get to that and getting the water back turned off for back for this part. It is our recommendation that the board forward with the turning on of the water again, allow the due diligence to go through. Hopefully, the purchase agreement closes and then at that closing, the city will be made.
I have a question.
Sure, people do.
You do, I do. We have a lien against the property anyway.
No. We have one small lien.
I thought we were going to file a lien.
You can only file a lien for a certain number of days that go past. And so basically, after every sixteen days, you need to continually file liens in order to protect yourself. So you have a lien for a very small amount of a hundred dozen.
So we should file a lien. Kind of good.
Or we probably should be continually filing.
Continually. On any past due utility bills, these types of bills you should be continuing to file.
Is it my understanding right with, unlike like cable TV, internet, cell phones, gas service, is there laws on water that restrict us from trying to... It's gonna take me a second to figure out what was the question, but basically going after, the best way is to put liens on the property to get those cleared. Trying to get those from, you know, new potential owners, like you said, is kind of at risk at will of the new buyers.
Yes, so under this statute, the statute is set up very clearly what we need to do and how we go about it. And in that statute, it says very clearly that unless a lien is placed prior to the transfer, you can't come back and collect upon the new owner. Like, the new owner has no obligation to make that offer. And that's why the agreement made in this purchase agreement is above and beyond what I mean, the new purchaser of this property has done a solid for the residents in that they're the ones that saying, out of the closing, we need all of this paid. And so...
Well, we appreciate that. I think it's way overdue, so I'm making the motion once turn their water.
So in turning it back on, like if there's certain sets that need to be taken, then yeah, I mean, I think it's perfect.
Have you spoke with him already about that or...? Okay.
No, the...
We have the state health person here that's in charge of that.
So do we know when we're turning it off?
I just need an established time of when the owner requests it to be turned on, and we will be there. Whatever they decide, we will do that. There was an email conversation today in regards to what they initiate with the boiler advisory and with the proper back tea testing. The city cannot mandate it because of the private property status. They have been fully cooperative in the email. The conversations have been good. And the best part of it is they've already made contact with Steve Urie and Clint Wood have both been involved in that. If we can, you know, steer them in any way and help them, I absolutely will. But it's just that we can't, the city cannot say, hey, you've got to do this, 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 and this. When we restore the service, our job is done.
Can I say for the potential new owners, our plan all along has been to be honorable, not only to the residents, but to this town. I personally work with the ownership group. This is my town. We're not going to do anything funny. We call Steve Urie, he's with the state health department. We have oil sands for them. We're going to follow the direction of the health department and what they want done to the letter. We're going to do testing with the agencies they recommend. There's going to be nothing that's on the cheap, on the slide. It's going to be one hundred percent above board by the books. So that is a guarantee.
We appreciate that. As always, all these residents, they really suffered and they deserve, they need their water honestly. So do we have a date? That's up to you guys.
Well, that's up to, it's your call. You just, you decide when, where, and what time, and we will be there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, within the next forty-eight hours, we're...
You contact the mayor's office, you contact Darcy's utility office, however you want to transmit the conversation, give us a time and we will be there.
And we pencil in for Wednesday morning?
You give me a timeline, I'll put you... Eight o'clock, eight thirty.
Work?
Eight o'clock. Eight o'clock?
Yeah, early to eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
That way, account for traffic.
I'll tell you what, we will meet you at eight thirty, right there behind the subway.
Right, where that, yeah, I saw that.
We'll meet you right there at eight thirty, and then we'll go with your discretion.
Yeah, and Steve right here.
It'll be a little slow.
Yeah, that's fine. That's why I said I could take my daughter to school.
Got it.
And I'll be right there and...
Got it.
We'll bring some additional bodies so we can get things open and vacant units and get water flowing.
Got it, we'll do it. We'll charge it very, very slowly.
Yeah, that's fine, we're good.
If this helps the council at all.
What happens when the water's turned back on and no one shows up to address the leaks for six weeks?
Sir, we have Dave Zimmerman of Hoosier Drain Guide. They're licensed bonded plumbing company that has a lot of background in mobile home parks. I've been doing this for twenty-seven years, mobile home parks exclusively in Indiana. My local one that you can check to compare the quality of my work would be Maple Hills in Franklin. Okay, that gives you some idea of what my parks look like, that I run, how we take care of them, what we do. Hoosier Drain Guys will be there when they dial it on because we think there's some severe leaks. There's no need to waste water. And so he's going to be there to try to control the severe leaks. We have our head of maintenance, local, which is Bill Spangler. He's going to be there going trailer by trailer. If there's a leaking faucet, a plug, you know, a toilet that's flushing right, all those things, he's going to be shoring those up as we go. We have Jared who represents the ownership room. He's going to bring in his heavy hitter maintenance repair guys. Hit this like, I don't know, Grant took Richmond, where it's going to be tough. We want to be all over the place and moving. Because the last thing we want is to disappoint you because truthfully, I live here, there's some other parks here I'd like to have too. If I do a good job, I have feeling you guys are going to say, Cindy, she's the girl who did it. So that's our plan. We'll have licensed bonded plumbing crew there, representative from the state, representation from the ownership group. You don't know me, but you'll get to know me. I'm Cindy Heisel. I operate distressed parks exclusively. I will be there. I'll be there till about one o'clock. We're not going to take one of the girls to the dentist after that, and then we'll be back again. I live right around the corner from here, Twenty-first and Jefferson. If you can't reach me on the phone and you have a question, on the door, because I don't go far and I won't be mad. I wouldn't put my name on this if I didn't want it right. It broke my heart to see this park closed, but I knew exactly where you were coming from. You were stuck in a no-win situation. If you didn't shut the water off, they're going to be mad that you didn't take care of the money right. If you shut the water off, then you're an oker, card, hole, awful people. You were never going to win. So all we've got to do is move on from here. Give me a chance. Give me a day. See how that first day goes. If you don't like it, call Jared. He'll get rid of me in a heartbeat, but I'm telling you, I don't let people down, especially not on my back door.
I think you're already ahead on the jump there. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll be there Wednesday. I'm just hope wrap over that, so we'll have some...
We appreciate everybody's help. And this is a bad situation. If we could turn it good in just a couple of days, that'd be great.
Well, I can tell you that from ownership group, I mean, we're, we are aware of the need, we're going to spend money that we won't recoup regardless of what happens through due diligence and timing of purchase and things like that. And we're aware of that. And that's something that we knew going in and we're ready to do it because water's got to get on.
It's just the right big deal.
So we are prepared to take one on the chin, worst case scenario, just to get it done. So, but we're very hopeful and excited. And we've started our due diligence, just to speak to that period. A lot of the physical due diligence, we've been doing for a couple of weeks. So we are going into this with our eyes wide open in terms of leaks and things like that. So I just want to say that from the perspective that we're not going into this with this rosy idea that the water's going to get turned on and there's, oh, the plumbing's great. There's no, you know, nothing to worry about. So we've prepared, you know, capital wise to spend on those things and do that so long term that this doesn't happen in the future.
Thank you.
I have to speak to his... All right, we're gonna move on.
Mayor, hang on.
Well, it's okay. Go ahead.
No, you got to speak to his credibility super quick. He has turned to other parks that were not in as bad a shape, but in recent months around in, let's see, American Mobile Home Park, Redwood Mobile Home Park. He's done it before he actually opened them. So they hire managers to do things, to spend money to fix the problems that we had for a long time.
We appreciate that. I'm not really sure to go the other direction.
All right, thanks. We're gonna move on to the justice fire contract. Probably has to look over that.
Am I having questions about that? So that contract was negotiated through the city. They did have some questions, we've gone from the fire department just operational wise and staffing wise and truck wise. Everything's good. It's a twenty-eight month contract, goes through March of twenty twenty-eight. So it'd be renegotiated in the early part of twenty-eight. It's the same contract, been in place for thirty-four years, I'm sure. Longer than I've been in fire department.
We've covered Red Bull as part of that agreement?
Yes. The entire town of Reston, Paul and Earl Township. I did speak with Kathy Lehner. I hope I pronounced correctly. She said one, there, it's on their agenda for their meeting. Don't put a date, I want to say it's next week. It's their tech meeting.
I'll say that. I'll say it. Yes, we've got a swearing agreement. Andrew Julie.
Well, this is Andrew Story, we were talking a couple of months ago, pending curve, his official start date is today. Comes to us with a vast variety of experience. Welcome. He will be joining.
Be joined by...
Asian.
Asian. Back in, you're good.
Come on in.
Almost back in. It's not fire. That's for a second. We're at for a second. I know we're forty-four shifts, belly shift.
We have a contract. A lot of litigation. A work issue. Well, since...
Do you hear if I follow this word? For a term that was for compliant and forced. Compliant and forced constitution of the United States of America.
And the constitution and law.
And the constitution and laws. Of the state of India.
That says that the city of Alexandria.
The ordinances of the city of Alexandria.
Regulations of the Gili County Department.
And the rules and regulations of Alexandria.
And clean and partially discharge.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge duties of my office as a firefighter. And the MP to the best of my ability.
I knew you were going to shut down the...
Yeah, right?
Thank you.
Got to love it.
You have to, right?
Hang on, can I rescind that at these for gas?
I'm not the guest.
Good tender lines. Maybe it's the third one. Yeah.
We got you for a minute. Next, we have a vacant captain's spot. So officers myself went through and Lieutenant May has been recommended to be promoted for captain. Three years as a lieutenant, almost seven, six and a half, just six. So lots of wealth of knowledge and did a great job. Happy to be the captain, Asian. It's your true goal, like, to be the captain.
Oh, second.
I'm sorry, Roger. All in favor? Thank you. I'm spotted here somehow in the show. Michael May. Do hereby solemn swear. That I will support compliant and forced constitution of the United States of America. And constitution and laws in the state of Indiana. The ordinance in the city of Alexandria. And the rules and regulations of the Alexandria Fire Department. I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office as captain. My office is captain. The best liability is to help the dogs. I do a state from Brown.
Thank you.
Someday I'll ride on that truck. Someday I'll take a ride on the truck.
It's hard to follow up the turning on of the water at the trailer park. I'm here to ask for the approval to hire Wes Cohen. Pending this approval, this will be the first time in over two years the police department will be holding staff. Wes graduated from the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy back in two thousand twelve. They had it together. He spent some time in Chesterfield, Pendleton, IMPD. He's already in the seventy-seven per fund, so we have to, there are any additional costs to the test fee. Everybody at the department's excited having, we're lucky to have an officer this call me. He's firearms instructor and also less than a instructor. So having your approval, which I'm asking for, will be hoped for the first time in your business.
Make a motion, I'll be free. You got any more, learn any more like you? There's plenty of others playing.
Hi. All in favor? Hi. Swear it on my ass? That's right. I think I did. I can, hereby solemn swear. Do hereby solemn swear that I will support, or permit, compliant and forced the constitution of the United States of America. Constitution of the United States of America and the constitution and laws of the state and the constitution and laws of the state of Indiana. That is the city of Indiana. And the reason why I have a case, the city of Alexandria Police Department. I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office. Discharge the duties of my office. As patrolman to the best of my ability.
Twenty twenty-six FOP contract. Hello, Eric Oldfider, FOP one twenty-four, President. For our contract this year, we worked pretty diligently. We came up with a new thing where we've been doing working groups leading up to hitting anything that we're going to accomplish and agree upon. This year, we had a few changes. We did a three percent coal increase. We reduced our complement by one and spread it that across the remaining positions. We streamlined our holidays. We removed the super holidays and the math that comes with all of that. Added Easter, then adjusted some longevity to support the lower year officers. And we plan on continuing with the working group process, streamline future contract evaluation.
So with this contract adding the, just taking that one person away and that is splitting it up between all officers, this is, this puts us up there and competitive with everyone in Massillon County. So we're right up there and we continue to find other ways where we can hold and keep our base salary up there with them. This is a big deal and we appreciate it, one of you guys.
And you know, it's hard to compete with outside areas that are astronomically higher than we are. So being able to do this and publish a pretty fair rate wage puts us in that fighting group.
We appreciate all of what you guys have done and what you sacrificed to gain for your department as a whole. And particularly for us as a city. So I'll make a motion to accept that.
Thank you.
To move.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all.
I mean, the whole time.
Hey, how are you? You all right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What's up?
He said, don't be quiet, right?
Yeah. Do my best.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm thirty, there was two to walk it around like. Yeah.
We're all here. You want to go ahead and get the working session started for seat council number seventeen?
We need a motion that I move. Not voting, so just, okay, good, consent.
Two things on the agenda for this evening. I think a good opportunity while we're all here together to have a discussion as a group about. Utility rates and what comes next. So I'd open the floor to any questions that you guys have.
We're going into phase one.
It's been motioning for phase two. You guys should have those rates. It was, it was a document that Darcy created to show what it would look like based on Baker Tilly's suggestions. Phase one, phase two, phase three. And then. It's been talked about to implement phase two. And then we also have some talking points to this too. So for example, the city has deferred utility rate increases for eight years. There has not been a utility rate increase since twenty seventeen. In that time, the city's covered utility deficits by moving funds from accounts that had excess revenue at year end. Therefore, in twenty twenty-four, there wasn't enough excess revenue to cover overall budget deficits. The utilities caused in the water sewage and sanitation accounts couldn't be pulled out of a negative balance. Hence the need for us to look at. Raising rates. Like I said, for the first time since twenty seventeen.
What are they right, say? Can't.
Okay. Yeah.
Right now, the trash needs to go. Sure. The water sewer. When I first came on, we're, everybody was paying like seven dollars and the city was paying thirteen dollars. And that, if I'd been on it, that'd never happen because there's a deficit right there in automatic. For how many years did they do that? That can't be done. If you break the, if you break the trash down, you know, sometimes five, sometimes four. Still, that's six dollars a trash pickup for a whole big barrel full. And that's, that's a good deal, really. So as a Newcastle, I was paying waste management. There was a lot more now. And I didn't have a role in the thing. I had to carry my.
Next thing. There's a lot to wrap your head around, a lot to look into, and we need to have a lot of discussion regarding it. I'm still not sure even on the. The balances and the balance.
The balances of the utility funds?
Are there other ways? To go about things? I know the only other, the only other way of anything that's been said to us is selling utilities. That would be our only other option? Is that what I'm understanding?
Are you asking what are the options to raise rates or? So it's kind of is that?
I mean, is there another option?
Aside from borrowing more money now? Not that I'm more. Grants and loans only get you, grants only get you for projects. Grants aren't anything that funds your daily operations. And these are looking at daily operations is my understanding. Now, we have done a lot of projects. You guys can speak to better that are here than me, the department heads of what capital projects they spent out of pocket. And I know we tried to cover those, but it's, it looks like. We haven't had the money to cover all the capital projects we've been doing. And I say that meaning as a small town, we save up two, three, four, five years. Get a couple hundred thousand bucks in the, in the utility. And then they have, they need to spend it because they're placing that big part. Or something. So then they'll spend that two or three hundred thousand dollars and takes them back down, you know? So we. I don't want to speak to the guys again, but that's historically just beeping around it, you know, for a back truck or something. They'll try to set back two, three, four, five hundred thousand dollars and or use that against the loan. But back to your question, no, I don't know personally that there's, I don't have any knowledge of any other option than. Keeping up with costs of living, cost of inflation, cost of products, cost of goods, cost of services. Obviously, we need to get stewards for money. That's second point, I'm sure.
And I think also, you know, we've talked about, you know, we want Alexandria growing, but our infrastructure is kind of. Adequate. And to do anything, we've got to be able to update that. And it's unfortunate that it's been so long since we've increased. You know, I'm like everybody else, you know, you worry about that, you know, if you're a fixed income. But when I know that it's going to better the city. And with the projects, and we just needed to get stewards of what happens from here on out. With that.
You know, I was looking at that. So what infrastructure noted more improvements that will cost at least five million dollars. Some of these costs are replacing water meters, refurbishing the south water tower. New chlorine tank scales in both the water system and wastewater departments. Improvements to the wastewater control system. Ten lift stations around the city to help move wastewater to the water plant. And then there's even more additional improvements. That will be necessary, so.
Some of those can be lumped into a project. Versus operating costs and then you hope to get grants and loans or loan forgiveness to offset those capital expenditures. But we can't get the grant money if our rates don't meet certain requirements. I'll speak to that just briefly because it's my background. State revolving loan fund, and you might know this, our council better than me, but I just found out recently they upped. The water and sewer requirements for OCRP, Office of Community Affairs, as well as state revolving loan fund. It's nearly a hundred and fifty for the combined water sewer just to qualify to get any kind of forgiveness or grants. And that's really frustrating because we have a lot of fixed income people in this community, yet they want us to charge right to the borderline of what do you buy can afford? And on top of that, we've got the long-term control plan that's X million dollars. And that's what the Baker Tilly is trying to let us know what, what we need to. Whether we're phasing it in, scaling it, whatever we're doing, but to get any type of loan from the state, they have a threshold for us to meet. And to get any OPRG money, there's a threshold. And that's required of all Indiana communities. And if we can't bond our own money because of other local issues we're struggling with. Our only option is state revolving loan fund. So our hands are tied in several angles. So that's. I got deferred legal on the SRF as far as you know.
No, I, I think you're accurate with the SRF. I don't know what the exact numbers are. To go back and look at that, there have been changes. But there always is requirements to. The way the state always says it is they want skin in the game. They want the individual local municipalities to take action. To get their skin in the game by raising rates. And once you hit a certain number, they will consider funding for the state. Depending upon that number, I'll, I'll have to go back and look because I know that they were looking at it, the changes every time the governor's office turns over because the technical. Controls that. It is one fifty as a combined for water and sewer. I don't think your face two hits that.
No. And so I, I don't know our timeline against. Long-term control plan compliance. I would definitely like to see us phasing anything in. Whatever we can do to ease the pain a little bit so people could budget. When we don't do a two, three percent, six percent, whatever, cost of living related adjustment every year is utility and we wait as long as we have. These big sticker shock rate increases. Hurt everybody, so. Whether phase two gets us there right now, I, I don't think it does personally from what I've researched I've done, we can have them confirm it. I'm not saying we need to do phase two now or by the end of the year, January. But when we get to the timing of the project, we should consider that later. Middle of next year. Whenever we're going to go ask for funds from the state, if we do for state revolving, that was. Actually, they're going to come to us and tell us. You either do or don't meet that. And so I just wanted to communicate that as part of our conversation tonight.
And I can follow the goal card or work down your long-term control plan. To get an update on that to see if you guys have any insights to. The fact of the matter is, your utilities are sitting in the negative by substantial amount. So. You guys are the council that is here now.
Yeah, we know.
I don't think you can kick it down. But you were talking about anything, that basically have two choices here. One is going to be implementation of increased rates. All of the users in the town area. For that given in your utility, if you cannot continue to operate in this fashion. Yeah, and. When, if you sell a utility, the whole process that you have to go through. You're going to have to defeat any debt that is out there on that. It will be an infusion of cash, but then at that point, you don't have your water, you don't have your sewer, you don't have your wastewater. Or your trash. Well, you might keep your trash, you know. Storm waters you would like to see, so it's water and wastewater. And then at that point, don't have any control over that. So when you talk about the road. You're at the mercy of whomever, whomever is there. Some situations, that's a blessing because if you're talking about a. Citizens or an Indian American person, they have the capacity and they have a single rate tier where they bill, they use almost the same amount. A lot of the. They will, as they do in Terre Haute, as they do in Green, it's a single rate tier. So because they're so large, it's economies of scale, so they can keep their rates a little bit lower. They want to spend time developing relationships with entities like that to make sure that they. Have Alexandria on the list. Sure they keep your infrastructure to the level which would accommodate any growth. That's what the city needs. But again, it's all outside of your control.
I'll be the first to speak up real quick. I am not going on record if Baker's selling water sewer anymore utilities, just so that's clear.
No, I just wanted.
Do you understand? I do understand sometimes the hand is forced. Not by us, but just by circumstances. Because of that larger capital purchasing ability. They can sometimes keep the rate low. But I.
My understanding is not that much lower.
It's not that much. It's not fifty percent. It's not ten percent. Yeah, it's not, it's, it's not much lower. It's start out low and then. And then that, yeah, and you don't have local representation. We don't vote Indiana American Water, we vote, don't vote Aqua Indiana, we don't vote citizens. We would lose that control.
No, I would hate to see that happen too. I was just looking through.
Oh, I know, you're fine.
Our options are. And how we avoid, you know. Going forward, how we avoid things like this as well as making sure that. We're going to be in a good place. You know, because is this what we need? Are these options? I mean, obviously, it's the experts who put this together. But just making sure that we all take time and do our due diligence to research it, to ask those questions. So that we aren't in this.
Now, this might like say that the. Trade of cordages, is this figured in with this also? Is that?
You know, I don't.
No.
It's not going to make any impact. So if you remember, the Baker Tilly report took it off the cash balances at the end of twenty twenty-four. So your cash balance in twenty twenty-four was, well, still negative, was still. Not where your cash balance is now. Even with the hundred thousand dollars that comes in, it's not going to make it right. You moved one point five to one.
And I want to make sure I heard some, so. And I don't know who said it. So do we think of the tier two is not enough to help us?
I was saying that it will not fall if the one fifty combined rate is correct for water and sewer. The tier two is not going to get you.
Okay, so if we do, if we started out with tier two and we look at twenty twenty-seven. Because that, that goes up a little bit. But you know, does that make a difference? We have a year.
Well, I mean, you, you can implement rate hikes within there, but. You, you will not be able to qualify if that combined number is one fifty from now until the rates get to the level where.
I guess that's where I'm kind of confused. What is the crucial? What's a crucial step here? You know, do we go with that or and hope for the best or? I mean, am I making sense of that?
Yes, because I don't, I, no one's communicated to us that we'll be applying to OCRP for. So I think we're missing that piece too.
Um, you know, just talk openly because we're having a conversation to like, not spaghetti at the wall, but we have. An agreed order and different legal documents tells we got to do certain projects by a certain time. The state's going to come in and tell us at some point, you've got to do project A, B, or C, whatever they also they're muddling on. The states have come in and tell us at some point, you've got to do project A, B, or C, whatever they also they're muddling on, which one we're going to be settling. There's only a handful of funds available out there for any kind of grant or loan. If we can't bond. The state revolving loan fund is, my understanding, the only other fund to apply for five, ten million, whatever the dollar now amount is. We can't find that, we can't get that through a other, a high interest loan of something somewhere. Typically paired with state revolving loan fund is an OPRAM grant. They typically pair those together just to try as much grant money as you can. Um so they're just another grant fund out there. There was USDA um United or Department of Ag. And they have a environmental fund as well. Um theirs aren't quite as strict on the rates. But they take longer to get and they're more difficult to get. And last I also heard is their funds are limited. Um the what we refer to as Build America by America and some of the rest, um the money from um. Rescue, the old ARPA funds and all of that got funneled through instead of USDA got funneled through the different states. Uh revolving loan funds. And again, correct me if you guys know anything different. So USDA is a good resource for small communities. And they do, depending on the income of the community, can grow up to fifty percent towards your project if your income levels are low enough. So OPRAM's loan is kind of basically low to moderate income level assistance for communities with low to moderate income. USDA is assistance to load or mod- moderate income, you know, communities and families. State revolving funds are just a bank with. Low interest money, lower interest money than what we can get on the market. So we have. Unforced projects that have to be done, one mostly to all the sewer stuff by the state. Water projects can be kicked down the road, but Mark, yeah, he's still here, I could speak to maybe. The timeline, his projects, and the state's not forcing water projects. Um lead service line replacement. Again, Mark, if I'm wrong, they're going to have some funding that the state's going to actually fund some of that. Thank goodness, we're not going to have to worry about as much of the lead service line replacement as we thought we were going to because the state's going to kick some funds in to help with that.
Um the state has at least their inventory results either from last year.
Okay.
So I mean, we're we're thirteen months into that.
Yeah, so we don't even know what that really looks like.
They had not even, there there's not even been a response to it.
In real time, if I could interject, I hope I could bring you up. This is where it comes in, where I get the confusion because these type of things and plans. Even though we may come early and attend a board at work meeting or what have you, are not things that are under our radar or decisions. Those type of things. So how do we work on that too going into the future and knowing whose job is. Who's to decide these things and oversee the timeline, the type, like are people working with the department heads? To know, hey, this like, because when you made the comment about required projects, like how soon? Do we know that it's a required project so that you can plan those type of things?
And again, that's where Border Works has to communicate with council and or somebody needs to come. And again, I think that's why she mentioned you guys coming in a little more to. Maybe help communicate back to council. Some of the activities going on and or whether it's the mayor or whoever present some of this stuff back to council that have. A council implication of a rate, right? So Border Works does the contracts, the projects, but the rate. Comes back to council to pay for all the projects that are under Border Works um.
But we don't see the funds that are in the utilities.
Got it.
So with that being said, like is that something that the Board of Works? I mean, they are the fiscal body, I understand that part, but as far as.
We don't get claims through Border Works. That was kicked around at one time with the claims that go back to Border Works or some sort of purchase. Arrangement that's under state statute, does some of that come to Board of Works or? Is that a way to kind of look at the money as it's being managed to better manage the utility funds? Or utility service board? That's another, a whole other conversation. We probably need a presentation on some night. But there's Marion has one, there's other communities have a utility service board, appointees by council, appointees by the mayor and. You others that create a whole separate entity that manages from a director all the way down, a whole structure.
And we obviously don't have the money for all the people that, do you mean like different people other than mayor when you say director?
Yeah, so essentially you would be looking at, if you had a utility services board, the. We'd set up an operational level. Uh this is the chief of utilities and this person oversees everything and that person. Then the water and the wastewater and the trash and the storm water all report up to the utility service board chair. And that person is the person who comes to for you to give you updates. Um normally what happens is when we have a utility. While it's not in the LGF controlled budget, because you're not talking about tax carry dollars, it is a budget that somebody should look at. Um it's not just an open checkbook to utilize stuff. You want to go through and make sure appropriations are made appropriately. And that you have the line items funded properly. Um you had a question about the timelines and the projects, you know, what are these required projects? Oftentimes what happens is uh the federal government will pass legislation that becomes unmended, unfunded mandates and. The separation of sewer and wastewater is one of those. So it's called the combined sewer overflows and in in the past. Used to have your wastewater treatment uh sewers and people would connect stormwater drains to that. And so all the water would be captured off of the impervious surfaces, so rooftops, driveways, parking lots. And then it sent to your wastewater treatment plant. And at your wastewater treatment plant, when you have that inflow of just water. At super high rates, you impact the bugs that are in your system to uh digest the waste. But then the capacity of your tanks is overwhelmed. And then so you have what's called overflow. Combined sewer like in rainy events, your wastewater treatment plant then exceeds the amount that it is allowable to discharge. Under the federal government, each one of those, at least a few years ago, each event like that is twenty five thousand dollars. Every single one. So if you have several, it adds up pretty quickly if they choose that enforcement. What they required is that you disconnect now your storm water system from your wastewater system. What should be going into your wastewater sewers are going to be household waste and uses. That need to be treated through your storm water or through your wastewater plants so that you can. Put out effluent that meets the federal requirements to be discharged back into uh the water. The only way to ensure that is to make sure that you don't kill all the bugs and have all of these overflows. So that's why you have to create the separation. That's the project that's working. Like, how do we separate all of those things? How do we make sure that people aren't tied into um. Wastewater treatment plant and those are the sorts of projects that are going around. Um in in it's weird, in two thousand eight is when it really started and they started with a larger community. So. Indianapolis had to come up with what their plan was. That was that big huge tunnel that they did under the city of Indianapolis. Evansville is still negotiating their plan because they're right on the Ohio River. In Terre Haute, we had to do a situation which was a thirty six million dollar fund that we had to convince. EPA and IDM, you know, six, seven years ago, that thirty six million dollars is enough. They wanted a ninety two million dollar project. Now. Those numbers, like we calculated rates for that thirty six million, if you go to that ninety two million where EPA and IDM said they wanted you to be. Well, it's not like EPA and IDM are paying anything. You have to build that into your rates for your customers. And so now you're talking about an increase that is tremendous to cover that. I know that Alexandria has been in the middle of negotiating and going through to try and nail down exactly what the project is. Have most of it designed. It's just an argument of this one little thing that this solved it, or do we have to talk about millions of dollars more? And that's the negotiation that's going on. We don't even know what the final number is unless something has happened recently that I'm not aware of.
And that's when you're referring to long-term control.
That's a long-term control.
Lose a sleep at night.
Because you you can come up with a perfectly good plan that works on a local level. But EPA is looking at it through their lens and they don't really care what the solution is. They're looking more at how much you are spending on this. So oftentimes they're saying, no, this solution needs to cost this much money. And that's the only way that they can. Guarantee on a granular level that the product is sufficient.
I've heard them say that. There used to be a need for a server that was applied for affordability when we did the affordability analysis a long time ago.
They they look at that to talk about what are the rates, what, so there's an analysis that comes in. And so they will, they have done their study on Alexandria already. They have looked at what your income is. They've looked at what your rates are. And in their mind, you need to spend X because it needs to be a certain amount of what the household gross income is in their calculation. And what we're fighting right now is we don't think we need to pay X. We can get away with paying Y and solve the problem. So tell like approve Y.
And we're fighting to keep these costs down, even though they're going up. We're still trying to.
And there's been a few efforts and expenditures that we've approved. Taught on behalf of us going and fighting the state and fighting EPA in a good way. Because David's group and everybody, they've done a good job at reducing that inflow. Um and the capture rate is really good here, mid that capture rate. And we're trying to justify our case. Yes, it's hundreds of years old infrastructure and it's going to need tons more work, but. We're we're really close to meeting the intention of clean rivers, right? Few overflows if any, the limit within reason. Um so. I'm trying to see the big picture of the, so that's.
In that part.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure we're all hearing it.
But I appreciate you explaining that.
Comes back to your question is we don't actually have, all we can do is shoot at this target and that target's moving. I mean, our rate, whatever we decide, whenever we decided, next meeting into the year, next year, really like. It that's going to be continually changing number a little bit until we get some sense of. What the state forces our hand to do on sewer. Now, water is pretty well identified. Storm water is pretty well identified.
It's a really. Just on our side for the council is there's a process when you. Consider increasing rates, but to create the rate ordinance. Uh but then you have to have a public hearing, get everything advertised. So I guess a big question, it's not a final mode type of situation, but. Is that the process that this council wants to start moving down? Because we can talk about it all the time, but until you start getting things on the calendar for days.
I think consensus, yes. I, the only question I have is, it might be we're done or more work. It might be better to lump it all together. But is there any way we could knock trash out quick, fast and get that one done? And then do. Or is that cause too much of a problem?
If you get done, you can raise each one separately, but then each one separately, you're going to have to have a public hearing.
Is trash required for a public hearing?
Anytime you increase rates, if you're going to be pushing rates on your residents, you need.
Another public hearing, okay. Which I'm not against public hearings if we need to have, do we need to have for the public's sake, I mean.
Even though trash is a, you know, they don't want to pay this, they can get their own people. Waste management or something, even though they have an opportunity to get another company to come pick up their trash. It's still, they're still under our umbrella.
Yeah, because you are offering it right now. You're offering it for a certain amount. If you change that amount to a much higher amount to cover this, there's a chance that a lot of people move, right? And stop using Alexandria, you know, ways to go to a private contract. That, so your action will be requiring your residents to pay, except for that. So I mean, it makes it easier just on a um. Procedural to run them all at the same time because then you hit them all. It may make it better. And this is, this part is all of you guys, please, that you're going to have to make a decision. I don't know if it makes it better or your constituents are not to say, okay. We're going to raise trash in December, but then we're going to raise your water.
About the billing, like the number of questions we get on the street about their bill or dangerously, like if you just go and I. I know there's probably a lot of work to have to put that type of thing into the systems with however the, I don't know this system that. They currently use and have you bet, um I know there's been a lot of questions about those type of things. So if we just go and. All of a sudden your trash and then they're still trying to figure out their bills and then we add another one. I think that'll just be a nightmare and that's just my own opinion because I do know I get a lot of constituents that reach out about their.
Well, and if I heard right, if a tier two is not going to be quite enough. It's or we shouldn't be just picking one and increasing and da, 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 da. I mean.
I think you meant timeframe or so.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
It's just, it's time now, like. In.
But I think we need to talk about that.
I I want to go back to that because I don't think that's true. What's not on the. Assume bill is the hydrant fee. The hydrant fee is increasing as well from a dollar sixty one to four dollars and eighty six cents. So with that four dollars and eighty six added, it takes us over the one fifty threshold. It's one fifty, one ninety four.
But we can get those details. I think Hydra, I don't even know if Hydra fees count.
Yeah, that's my concern. I'm sure that they count, but I I don't have any, I won't.
I just think it's odd that this was a study published for us and it still doesn't capture what the needs are. That's odd to me.
That was.
Based on the information.
Yeah, that that was created based on uh end of year twenty twenty four. All the numbers that were in there. A lot of things has changed since twenty twenty. You know, we've had a lot of discussions with IDM and EBA and. I thought that maybe a better situation there. Uh but the other thing is a lot of stuff legislated has changed in the operations of OPRAM.
So I recommend, I mean, we have the increase, that's just a given, but we need to know what what it would take. To to do what we need to have done. We need to have a set number.
So my, if you're willing to take a recommendation, my recommendation would be this. Is to start the process and advertise it at the base to be the highest amount that you have in front of.
My advertising, worst case advertisement and then see where we, okay.
Because then you advertise what the the largest increase is that has been presented. And then you're pulling back from there if you come down with a lower number. If you advertise a lower number, but then have to go to a higher amount.
But we, so we're not, we're not committed to.
Not committed to the advertising numbers. This is, it can go up to this amount.
Okay, so timeline for this, we know rates are increasing. They need to increase right now. So what does the timeline look like for this? What do we need to do?
So I think. If you guys want us to uh proceed with the phase three rate for the advertising purposes. We'll get something prepared for consideration um for you for your first meeting in December. The advertisements will go out your public hearing. I have it. If you put a public hearing around a holiday period. On rates, you guys. Comment for me, not legal. Um but I would suggest in having a public hearing in January, in the new year. Once you have the public hearing, you can take action.
I've done work with Baker Tilly. Since I've started in this. We hire consultants like you do doctors and dentists and whatnot. You've got something big coming up. Sometimes. People get a second opinion. I feel that you could work, but I'm not opposed to with the council considering. Another financial company taking a look at things. Before we jump with all our feet and heads and hands into this rate increase, but I don't want to delay the process.
And it's another expense and we're already.
Yeah, oh, I know.
There's only so many of them that are right.
However, I would be interested in starting this. And then for next year, because next year there will be another rate increase and then every third or fifth year after that.
Yeah, that. Yeah, that might be the right way to do it. And it's, I hate to throw them under the bus, because they did, they did good work, they do good work. And they're giving us bad news, I mean, no matter who we pick, it's the lesser of the bad news.
Administration has changed to this.
Yes, yes, thank you. Financial issues that we were all concerned about and we still do.
Okay, any other questions that we can work out tonight?
I mean, there's ten, fifteen different firms, small ones, big ones, medium sized ones and.
One more thing to address and start the discussion, um, I think you've already been briefed on it, but it's the e-bike ordinance. So there were some situations this summer, I think this summer was the one that I really saw more e-bikes out in the community. And of course, it's mostly children on it. Um, but I think there was an incident that actually e-bike versus vehicle, I don't wanna say that incorrectly, but I'm pretty sure. And then I know of another near miss, I don't think it was reported to police. Um, so those are dangerous, um, and they're not currently included on out in our ordinance for ATVs, UTVs, golf carts and all of that. So um, the addition or new ordinance gonna be necessary for next summer, for sure.
The chief has reached out and said he wants us to start considering that, so we just need the ideas from you guys, I think. Fishers, um, and a couple of the communities have done this.
And I see the scooters.
So scooters are different than e-bikes.
But we, I think they need to be included.
Yeah, I see more scooters than e-bikes and I saw one actually run into the side of a vehicle because they do not stop with their, their children now and they go fast.
So e-bikes are essentially, you can pedal like a bicycle, you can sit, right? But then it's also.
The new moped.
It's like a new boat.
Yeah, when I was a kid, we all had mopeds and we drove to police nights.
But these things will go.
And spread our parents.
Thirty miles an hour, right? Scooters are, you stand, for the most part, you stand on it, just like a skateboard with little handles, they have, it's electric powered. They do not go that fast, um, but they'll go fifteen.
That's our speed limit through town is twenty, so.
This really sets me off on a soapbox real quick, um, you might not like this. Oh, no, I hope everybody hears it, um. Our police department struggles with language and ordinance. Sometimes, to the good or bad. We get hung up on does it have pedals, does it have two wheels, does it have a clown on it, okay? Is their language, whether it's UTV, ATV, electric scooter, electric skateboard, e-bike. What can we do about the safety of our streets? And you may not have nature, I'm not trying to set you, but it's tough for the police, it's tough for us as council, but what we'll hear sometimes, well, our ordinance really doesn't cover it. If we write the ticket, they don't get fined, I'm like, write the ticket anyway, take them to court. But my concern is the safety and, and how do we umbrella some of this for everybody? I want police and fire to do their job, building city works, but I know it's tough. Do we legally have to spell out with these every time, every operational real vehicle? What, what becomes allowed on our streets and what does? I want the kids to have fun, my son's got an electric scooter, but I want, you know, like I want. How, is there, is there some advice you would have for us?
It, it's going, each community gets to determine what it wants to control and we've talked about these ordinances. In order to do more of a catch-all though, for the pedals and things of that nature, what you're really looking at is categorizing it now as any motorized or electrified, right, whatever. So it, but as soon as you do that, now that captures everything under that umbrella. And I think it's worth having, sitting down and talking to the police department, say.
For sure.
Is that what you want? Because now they're going to be looking at how do we enforce against everything.
It's not a car, a moped or a, and I get it, we get in the weeds, I get it, it's discussion, but you know, the ATV, UTV golf cart, you know, it's like.
Those are state defined.
Okay, good.
Statute, so the state has come in and said, this is what.
And it's new technology, we can't always keep up, this is new stuff.
Well, and age requirement are probably different on.
Oh, sure.
Someone that can drive a golf cart versus.
Electric bike versus a golf cart, yeah, yeah. I just, it's frustrating to have to write.
So much more dangerous than a golf cart.
It's, it's difficult for us all to. And I was a kid when they, when they said no rollerblades on the sidewalk and I was so mad because I rode my rollerblades on the sidewalk. And but someone opened a business door, I got hit, got injured, I understand the concern. Um, I just wish there was an easier way for us to not have to define every vehicle.
We can work on putting something together, like I said, there's certain communities out there, but we can work with the chief and say, okay, what, what works for your department? For the enforcement thing and we bring that back to you and then you, it's your consideration and the chief's gonna say that it all works for us and this is the reason why this works for us, that's all we can do.
And well, at that, we should probably revisit the sidewalk where you can and can't, because there are some signs. Some signs have been taken down, I've been told that it's not enforceable, I'm not sure, but that's another thing, if we're gonna have that on the book. It needs to be, I know, I'm sorry, I wasn't gonna say anything, but something about that, I think it was the best, no, I've said it before. I just figured that was a good time to remind.
We already have a golf cart ordinance, alright, and the last chief told me, they don't have to enforce it. Golf cart's a golf cart, alright, it needs to be registered for one, alright? But if they, if they pull over an unregistered golf cart, what do you do? So do we need to tell you like, like if you pull over an unregistered golf cart, you, you warn them? And then if you pull them over again, you fine them. Alright, if you pull over a kid that didn't have his driver's license, he's driving one on him, you know, what do you do first? You know, warn them, tell them to go home, if you catch them again, then, yeah. Is that what you need? First offense, second offense?
It, it was that easy, but you have three different shifts and sixteen different officers to where I wouldn't know if you stopped them and gave them a warning, especially when you're talking about kids who don't necessarily have an ID on them. You know, so it's not being extracted to.
Yeah, well, they don't have a driver's license, they're driving a golf cart on the, on the road, they're, that's illegal.
If you could get six warnings, if every, yeah, I had that conversation.
On my moped, I got one warning from, from Lamerson, Skaggs, Boston, and that's all I needed, I went home. And I quit doing it, I did what, what they told me to do, you know. I was all shorty and I went home, you know, I didn't mess around, you know, I went out and about somewhere.
And there can be a few bad apples that ruin for everybody, we did have a near fatality with an e-bike over the, the summer, with a child.
Well, I'm saying we've already got the golf cart, we can do the golf cart on its own and then we can put the e-bikes and mopeds and, and the scooters and all that.
And whatever's in it. The jet bike, the drone bike.
What we'll do is we'll just.
The hoverbike, back to the future.
I'm sorry, I hope that this can work themselves.
Yeah, I mean, these are, that's what we're here, I mean, that's our job, so I appreciate that. That's when these work meetings I feel are beneficial, because they can all be together, hear things, hear concerns, have input. And that is the beneficial part of those. I know we're talking about going back to regular meetings, um, but we could still keep an open dialogue throughout those and then try to get things.
I texted an engineer friend of mine just to see what that rate is, with this, uh, because they apply for those all the time. He's a hundred percent sure, but he's sure of two numbers, it's either one forty five or one fifty.
And what, two cases, storm and water?
Just waters, just water waste. Yeah, our storm doesn't count towards that unfortunately, nothing trash, nothing. So the state wants us at one forty five to one fifty. And I'm not saying we have to do that right away.
You're not even there.
But I don't know what. Just sanitaries. Let's see, we won't have to meet that total.
And that's just the top two underspension.
Or sorry, I don't mean to say it that way, I meant.
No, no, I, I, I didn't, so I'm glad to know that now that that number, because I didn't know about the hundred and fifty.
What we'll be facing is when Project X shows up, how do we fund it? And again, I don't feel that's kicking the can under unnecessarily, because that project is not here today, saying build me right now. But it is coming, so getting our rates to where we're getting out of the negative fund accounts, not to go back, sorry. But getting us out of the negative, getting us in the positive, building towards what's coming is all we can do. And I, I only had this thought after Baker Tilly gave us the stuff and I was at a conference and they were talking about these issues. Because as we've learned where we are and where we're going to be, you know, it just hit me, you know? I, I wasn't aware that these rates were, last I knew it was about a hundred and twenty. Again, it's my information's just dated because of, I don't do that every day anymore. So I thought we were fine. But I learned the words, I learned at a conference and training that.
And I think that may have been this year, I think it may have been a twenty twenty five change.
So that could be why they didn't take that into account, I'm like, why?
If you listen to the presentation that Baker Tilly gave you, they were talking about the state of all of them. And that was your option, so I mean, things change, I can find the answers to that.
It's something to think about, especially if we start at phase three. Those two funds together are a hundred and twenty nine dollars. And then the move that we have to make for the following year would be an increase of fifteen to twenty dollars to get us into that state revolving fund requirement, so.
I don't agree with it.
I know.
I don't like it.
I know.
It seems like the state keeps poking us and EPA keeps poking us and.
Yeah, you do see every community's having these conversations right now.
Yeah.
I mean, that's maybe still any better than every.
Did a great job of showing similar communities, but they did also know which communities were doing these big projects and which ones haven't. The ones under our rates.
Which were few.
Haven't had to do the projects either yet.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be raising this rate.
If they haven't already.
Right, and the ones that are higher than us are because they've done the project.
Right. Necessary evil. Anything else before we wrap up this evening? Accepting motion to adjourn.
Jeremy.